I will read the agenda, then we'll come back and go through it one at a time. Call to order, we're going to identify board members in attendance. We're going to do some congratulations and send offs of new and old people. We're going to have some elections for the planning board. Review mail, review minutes, take public comment. And then we have three old businesses. One is floodplain bylaw amendment. The other is the Sugarloaf condo project. And the other is the North Main Street recreational plan. Then we've got some new business, which is a stormwater permit application. Then we'll see if there's any other business not reasonably anticipated. Forty-eight hours prior to the post in the meeting. We'll set a date for the next meeting and adjourn. Let us go around and introduce, identify the board members first of all, to make sure we have a quorum. And any votes that we do, and when we need to know who's saying what, we need to state our name. And on every vote, we have to, I'll actually do a roll call, and then the person will say yes or no if it's a vote. So I have to kind of identify people that way. But let's go around from who's on my screen here. I got Paul, you're here. So if you're muted most of the time, and then you have to remember to unmute yourself when it's time to talk. So Paul? Paul, can you let us know you're here? Okay, maybe we'll come back to him. Rachel?
Present, Rachel Blaine.
And Mary?
And Mary Cludier, present.
Max?
Max Antis, present.
Paul, are you present yet? Count him that we can see him. All right, John Waite, I'm here. And then we have two brand-new planning board members, who would like to have them actually maybe say a couple of words about themselves as they say that they're here. But congratulations first of all, on the election was just a week ago. Denise Mason and Annalee. And I'll let you actually help us. I don't want to get your name wrong the first time. So Annalee, why don't you just identify yourself and say a word or two if you'd like.
Yeah, Annalee Wolfcoole. You can kind of remember that I grew up in California where they thought cool wolf, so that works.
I am here.
Oh, good, we got Paul.
There's Paul. So glad to be here and, you know, really looking forward to learning more, especially as I'm getting up to speed with open meeting laws and conflict of interest and all of that. So I know I have a learning curve, but got some good people to work along with, so thank you.
Great, welcome.
You're hardly a newcomer, Annalee.
So I don't have many meetings today.
I have as many meetings as I have.
Right, I usually have my head, okay, today I put it aside.
Denise?
Hi, Denise Mason, present. Hearing a lot of background noise. We've been here for close to 30 years, two kids here. Love living in Deerfield. I'm really excited to be on the board, get back to the town. I'll have a lot more time. I'm retiring from my job in January. Maybe do something else, but, so I'm excited to have some time to work on the planning board. I think it'll be a great opportunity.
Excellent, so I guess we will hold off on a lot of assignments until January and then give you more work.
Hmm, okay.
And then I'd just like to say a couple words of thanks to the outgoing planning board members. And I didn't do as much homework as I should have, but Roger Sadowski was on the planning board when I got on, and that's been at least 12 some odd years. So he's been doing a fine job with us for many years, and we appreciate all his work. He's brought a lot of experience to this board, taught me things early on. And so we want to say thank you to him. And then Kip Kamosa has been on for several years as well. Even when he was on the select board, and then off the select board, he stayed on through the planning board, which was very helpful. And he, I can say, did a thorough job on a lot of projects that we were involved with and always did his homework. I always appreciated that about Kip. So I want to make sure the minutes reflect our appreciation and their great work for the town over the years. Rachel, anything to add? We didn't practice this, but.
I also express my gratitude to Roger and Kip for the significant effort and commitment they've made to the planning board.
Anybody else? All right, so as we do the first meeting after elections, when we know who's going to be on the planning board for the next year, we elect three positions, and that is the chair, vice chair, and clerk. For the past year, I've been the chair, Rachel has been the vice chair, and Paul has been the clerk. Actually been that way, I think, for a few years. And we always like change. So we're looking for nominations from the floor, or if any will have anything to say here before we do elections.
Well, I would like to nominate you, John. I think that you've done a spectacular job. I know that it is a lot of work, and it requires a lot of time between meetings. We've talked about this before. This is a volunteer position, but it is not without a lot of homework. And you've carried the ball on that, as has Paul. And I really appreciate it for one. And I feel like your experience in that role has been, is a real asset. And I apologize for nominating.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you go, Paul.
You can't. I wasn't able to get through it. For some reason, it was blocked out. And what was the question?
Do you have any nominations for chair, vice chair, or clerk? Or anything to say about it?
I'm in for whatever, that doesn't, it's no, it's not a big deal to me.
Well, I would say I'm happy to continue as vice chair. The times that John has really literally had to be absent are some of the most stressful days of, you know, the year for me. And it always gives me a lot of respect for what he does as chair. And I think it's a great learning curve for anybody who is, wants to sit close to that position and kind of figure out what that looks like. So I'm absolutely happy to cede my role as vice chair, but also just as happy to stay there. And if I could be helpful to Paul, too. Paul's really long time carried the ball for the minutes. And if he wants a break there, I'm happy to step in, but whatever. It is a lot of work in between, so a lot of homework for those two positions particularly.
No. What, what, I missed a lot of this. What's the, what are we looking at now?
We're talking about officers, the positions clerk, vice chair, and chair. Vice chair, we didn't even have vice before. That's a newish role. When I first joined the board, we didn't have a vice chair.
So Ann Mary, I'd like to see if you're interested. You've been on the board now for a year, and whether you'd like to be nominated for a position.
I, um, I am. Excuse me. I'm also committed on a different level, so I want to make sure that I'm able to do what I'm putting out there. I would do either Paul's or Rachel's, but I was just about to nominate Rachel because she does such a nice job. But, but yes, I'm absolutely open for a position and able to take on more responsibility.
So Paul, we didn't have this discussion at all, but this is as good a time as any to have it. Are you, you've been the clerk for a while. Would you be happy with someone else taking it on for a while? We have more staff at the town hall now who helps with the minutes, but I know that's a pain sometimes.
Yeah, fine with the clerk, but I'm not that interested in the other two positions. So however it goes is fine with me.
With this web platform, I, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I was just saying with this web platform, I can upload this whole conversation the next day. So minutes are good because it sort of surmises the whole conversation, but it's still unable to put it up there, and it takes care of that requirement.
So Paul, I was going to ask if we could nominate Ann Mary as clerk. I know, I gotta tell you, I copy you on a lot of emails, and I seldom get responses from you in between meetings. So I think maybe you're overloaded and you don't get to it, so maybe Ann Mary could be able to participate more.
Yeah, I'm fine either way, that doesn't matter to me.
All right, so I'd like to nominate Ann Mary as clerk. Have a second? Denise and Annalee, you can vote on these now.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Max, do you have anything to add?
No, that's fine.
All right, so let's, we can just do the slate then. I do like to say that if I, I will, I would accept the nomination for chair again, as long as I know I do have a good vice chair and clerk. So I can, I'd like to facilitate the meetings, I'm happy doing that. But I think we'd like to share the work in between the meetings as much as possible. So, and as I've also said, if you vote for me to be chair, then you've kind of got to respect me if I try to keep the meetings on target and, you know, keep them moving. And I think we've been doing a pretty good job the past couple of years, so I'm good with that. All right, so let's, so the slate is John Waite as chair, Rachel as vice chair, and Ann Mary as clerk. Do we have a, well, I guess I shouldn't move that, so can someone make a motion?
Sure, I make the motion to have John as, John as the, John as the chair. Rachel as vice chair, and Ann Mary as clerk.
Great. Second?
Emily, I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, now I go around. So all those in favor, I'll name your name, and if you just say yes or no. Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
And Mary?
Ann Mary Cludier, yes.
Paul?
Okay. I'm not sure I'm hearing what's happening. Have we got a slate of officers to go here?
Yes, me as chair, Rachel as vice chair, and Ann Mary as clerk. Do you approve?
I'm okay with that.
All right, Max?
Yes. Max Antis, yes.
Annalee?
Annalee Wolfcoole, yes.
Denise?
Denise Mason, yes.
And John Waite, yes. That's a unanimous seven to nothing. Well, congratulations, I guess. All right, next up is review the mail. I did that earlier, there was one thing about Waitley that we don't really need to talk about. Review the minutes. So we do have minutes that were in our email. Did everybody read them? Does anybody want to make a motion? That's minutes from the May 4th meeting.
Yeah, I moved that we accept the minutes. As, let me see. I have no, I have no objections.
I second that, Ann Mary Cludier.
Oh yeah, that was Rachel Blaine, I moved that.
All right, and it looked good to me. Any other comments? So the motion was made and seconded, so I'm going to come around again and get people to vote to approve the minutes. Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, vote yes.
And Mary?
Ann Mary Cludier, yes.
Paul?
I'm in favor, yes.
Max?
Max Antis, yes.
And John, yes? And then I think we can, well, Annalee and Denise probably abstain, but Annalee?
Well, they have to abstain because they weren't at the meeting.
Annalee Wolfcoole abstained.
Denise?
Denise Mason abstained.
So they passed five zero two. Thank you very much. All right. All right, then we take any brief questions or comments from the public on things that are not on the agenda? Does anybody have anything? I didn't, I didn't see anybody on the list. I think everybody that's on the call has something on the agenda, so let's move along. So the first old business is the discussion of the floodplain bylaw amendment. So Chris Curtis cannot be with us tonight. I don't know, he didn't tell me to keep it a secret why he can't, but anyway, it seemed like he had some kind of injury. But what we had said at the last meeting, as we just reviewed in the minutes, is that there was some concerns about what it is that anybody had issues on in the floodplain bylaw. And so we asked people to read them carefully and to submit comments. I have not seen any comments from any planning board members over the past month. So it could be that we're all okay with the floodplain bylaw that we reviewed last month. But either way, it's been too long since we had our last public hearing that we need to have another one before we can actually recommend this to the annual meeting. Because any bylaw, any bylaw changes have to go to annual town meeting. And we knew it wasn't going to be appropriate for this last annual town meeting because it was outdoors and it would have been difficult. So we're kind of planning to hopefully have a fall town meeting when we might be able to submit some bylaw changes. So what I propose is that at our next meeting, we have a public hearing on the floodplain bylaws. And at that point, everybody's submitted any questions they have with it. Because we've had several meetings, and it seems like most of us, you know, are okay with it. So is that all right if we just put this for our next, make it a public hearing at our next planning board meeting?
Yes. I mean, I think that the chief concern was over the maps. And Chris, once he brings those maps, people will have a stronger sense of what properties are impacted, that there's going to be a change in maps, that's in the future, and that we'll have that information, that we will be armed with our, anyway, yes, I agree.
The digital maps are also so much easier to see, I think. I think it makes it much easier, I think it makes it much easier to be online for this part of it.
Yeah. All right, so let's, yeah, I think we should go around and vote that we schedule a public hearing.
Do we just make a motion to open a public hearing? So I moved that we, this is Rachel Blaine. I moved that we open a public hearing at our next meeting, which will be July. That's important, isn't it? Sorry.
Well, maybe we need to do that first, actually.
But July 6th is the first Monday of the month in July.
Yeah.
That's not the, so July 6th. Yeah.
It's not a holiday, right?
It, yeah. I don't think so. I think that because the
No, it's not. We're, the third is
Okay, good.
Thank you. So I moved, I moved that we open a public hearing at our next meeting on July 6th. An open, a, a, the public hearing, sorry, to review the bylaws that we have in front of us.
I second that.
All right.
Could you just say your name before you second that, Annalee? I'm sorry, that's right, Ann Mary Cludier, I second that.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of scheduling the public hearing for the proposed floodplain bylaw, July 6th, 7 o'clock, please say aye. Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, aye.
And Mary?
Ann Mary Cludier, aye.
Paul?
Paul, Alice, I concur.
Max?
Max Antis, aye.
Annalee?
Annalee Wolfcoole, aye.
Denise?
Denise Mason, aye.
And John Waite, aye. Unanimous. Jennifer, is that something you can help us publicize? I think we have the same language that we used probably, might have been three or four months ago, we had a public hearing, so we can use a lot of the same language.
Yeah, absolutely, I can set that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on. So update on the Sugarloaf condo project and the final sign-off. So we've had, this was a project that many of us know, a couple of years ago. And as part of the conditions for this project was that it would come back to the planning board, I think, three times for three different sign-offs to, I believe it's to extend the road. And so we would, we always checked in with the building inspector prior to that because the building inspector is the one monitoring the progress on the project. And today I received two letters, I think, I don't know if everybody did, but I received a letter from the building inspector and the DPW, the head of the DPW in Deerfield. And both of them, and I can get the letters up, but both of them said that they, say that everything has been completed as necessary in order to approve this final sign-off for the road. But I thought that since this has been a while, and there's been a lot of progress on there, I thought it would be really helpful for us to hear from the developer and about how's it going. Where are, part of what I'd like to also hear is where are, was our decision and our conditions appropriate? And have there been, you know, challenges and some successes? So we asked Mark Whitman and Dan Graves, his attorney, to come and give us a little update. And I can tell you, Mark, I was, the reason why I was running back here at 7 o'clock, I just climbed Mount Sugarloaf, and I looked down on it and took a picture and see how it was, if it was being completed, so I can have the aerial view. So, so Mark, can you give us a little update? Thanks for being
Sure, this is Mark Whitman. We're probably two years ahead of schedule, or we will complete this about two years ahead of schedule. Should be done about a year and a half from now, so that's a good thing for the town, a good thing for the people that are living in the neighborhood. We have had tremendous success and tremendous amount of interest. I would say, I haven't done a percentage on it, but I would say somewhere around 40% of the people who are living there or signed up to live there are from Deerfield proper. And then most of the other people are from the towns surrounding. We have had very little, in the way of problems, obviously, the problems you would expect getting a $24 million project up and running. But since then, it's been going on very, very smoothly. The only thing that is problematic and difficult to deal with is the storm water. And I know that's partially you folks and also the state, but it is a very cumbersome process. It's also very new to all of us because we are used to using storm drains. I think the intent is admirable to keep the water in our aquifers instead of having it going down the Connecticut River to Long Island Sound. I think that that's the positive of it. To actually install it has been brutal, but we're getting through it. We have 32, 32 units now occupied by their owners. We also have 14 at a time that we're constructing now. We will construct 24 a year. That is a speed up of the project. And to make sure the quality has stayed, we've actually hired about 60 total workers now. Because of COVID and the governor's belief that we were essential workers, we have not slowed down at all. We saw a slowdown in the market for purchases. In early spring before COVID, I was able to sell or put on a deposit five in five days. A year ago, this last spring, we put 18 in 36 days under deposit. So it looked like we were going to have another spring like that. We are almost out of stock now because I put 300 deposit in the last 10 days. It seems something's happened, I don't know what it is, but the public is out there looking again. And this age group, which is the age group we have to worry about the most because of COVID, they're coming in droves to see the project again. So it's been fantastic. I have, as of today, just five units out of 70 that are available for purchase. And you have my number.
Did I hear you right, you have five unsold units out of the 70 right now?
That's correct.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So as I said, I have the, I have the two letters. Robert Walden, our building commissioner, said, "I am satisfied with the substantial completion of Phase 2 and 3 roadways, drainage, and sewer for Snowberry Circle and Graylock Lane." And then the Kevin Scowbrow, director of DPW, said, "I'm satisfied with the substantial completion of Phase 2 and 3 roadways, drainage, sewer. This approval encompasses all roads, drainage, and sewer for the entire project." So Snowberry's the circle mark, right? And Graylock's the one that cuts across it?
Yes, that's correct.
Hi, John, I'm Plan Board, it's Dan Graves. So when we started the project, the options were two. We could have tried to post a bond for the construction of the road. Obviously, the town is concerned that when a developer starts a road, it needs to be finished. So the options were two, to either post a bond or to establish a covenant that said that we would not sell units on the portions of the road until the planning board had signed off. And that covenant was recorded, and essentially that covenant stated that with the letter that you've referenced from the head of the DPW, that the roads were substantially completed, that the planning board chair would sign off. So that's kind of the technical issue before the board tonight.
So thank you for reminding me that, because I was reading through the conditions that we wrote, and it didn't have this in there, the condition was the bond. And so then I asked a town officer, a town person to help with that covenant. And I didn't, I didn't get it, but that's what I remember, is that we kind of switched that out a little bit there, so. So the past two, I think this is the third sign-off, and the past two I did based on the building commissioner's recommendations, and then I informed the board about it. But this one, I would actually like the board to vote on it sort of with me and give me permission to sign off. And also that the public knows that we've We're, we're, we're looking at it. And yeah, so so um. The building commissioner and DPW say that the sewers are all okay and the drainage and stuff. And I know that's the challenge, but um. As long as it meets the town uh, the town needs, then then I think we're satisfied. Any questions from planning board members?
So this is the third one, John? Why, I feel like it's not the, this is the last?
They's.
It is.
Right. They completed 1, 2, and now 3.
3, okay.
And the 1, 2, and 3 were really just, those were the develop- it's Dan Graves, those were the developers' kind of decisions on how to construct the road. We could have gone through the whole thing at once, but. The way infrastructure lined up and things, we just decided to break it down into these phases. There's no, no magic with the 3, but that's how we ended up doing it, coming before John on the first 2.
I've also been going through all of the decisions. This is Jen Gannett, sorry. I've been going through some of the um, decisions and, you know, making sure and talking to the building commissioner that. Um, we'll go back and circle back like about the ads built for the property and just, there's just little final details that will, you know, have to be completed. And so. Um, we've been looking at that. Um, well, I did anyways. I looked through it and I talked to the building commissioner about it and. Just making sure that all of those little details that are on the decisions that the planning board made um, are going to be met along the way. So eyes are on it.
Yeah, it's Dan Graves. And Jen, as Jen, as those come up, feel free to reach out to me. And if there's any we can, you know, tick off or supply anything with, we're happy to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a, it was a six-page decision back on um. April 24th, 2017. And I, I think you're right. We, this is quicker than what had been anticipated to be uh. Signing off on all the three phases. Thought it might take a little longer.
The market has been tremendous. And it's the only way to put it. And uh. We had to bring in more people to make sure we could stay up with it. And as I said, keep the quality up. But uh, I give a lot of credit to my general contractors, all three of them that have done a fantastic job. We're, we're building something we're very proud of. The quality is there, uh, from what I'm being told by the buyers and from my eye. And I'm just very happy with the product we're able to support to the town. We're looking at somewhere around $400,000 a year in tax money coming in without children in the schools being added. So. I think it's a great benefit for Deerfield in a couple of different ways.
I don't know. I, I, I'm thinking of all the traffic that we talked about forever and ever. And it's, it's curious because I, I haven't felt the impact of that traffic, but I'm glad it's under control. So this is good.
Thank you. And I, John, I don't believe, I, I think Dan can fill you in on this, but I don't believe this is a voteable item. This is just uh. As long as we met the criteria, the DPW and the building inspector, it's a sign off by you. So I think that's.
Yep.
It's a check in.
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe just have the minutes reflected that we did have this report out and everything. That way, um. Sometimes as chair, I get nervous sometimes signing things without uh, having everybody, everybody behind me.
I know when I signed one of those. Maybe I didn't sign one.
So I think uh. Is Tony on the call? I, so we don't have any hard questions for the en- for the engineer, but I don't know if he has anything to say or uh.
I think he's waiting to come on later in the night.
Oh. He's used to us moving slowly. We've changed a lot, Mark, in the past three years. You, you tell him that, would you?
I will.
Well, we appreciated you guys. I mean, it, we went back and forth a lot, I know. And um. Annalee was the neighbor at the time and I'd um. You know, so. It, it, we are, we are where we are and uh. I think we're ready to, to sign off on it and uh, and keep moving forward.
Thank you, John. I appreciate, I appreciate the planning board's help.
Yeah, and I can say that I think the building inspector and the DPW, I mean, they've appreciated working with you too. And they, they haven't certainly told us any complaints, so that's a good thing.
Appreciate that. Yep.
All right. Thanks very much, Mark and Dan.
So John, thank you. Thank you all of you. John, just procedurally. John, it's Dan Graves. Just procedurally, we have um, two units that are tied to this road phase coming up for closing. Um, somewhere between the 19th and the 24th. So I just didn't know how to coordinate getting your signature. I'm happy to notarize here. I don't, I don't know what your schedule is like or what the availability is of a notary, but.
I'm actually available. I'm in Greenfield tomorrow, so um. Are you, should we, should we meet over at your office?
That sounds great. I'll have it at the front desk and I'll be, you know, we're masked up here and the door's open. So we're happy to see you whenever you come in.
All right, I'll give you a call before I come over then. Good.
I appreciate it.
Great. Thanks again, folks.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, yeah, I gotta go back to the, I only have one screen. I got all my documents on it here. So I'll get back to the uh, agenda. Where the heck did it go? It was here. There it is. All right. All right. So I asked to put this next item on here because we had it on as a, well, it's business now because we had it on new business last month. And um. We talked about the North Main Street recreational plan. It's a CIPC project. And last month, the planning board um, looked at it. Uh, Chief Pachur came on and explained it. And we looked at some documents, I think, and um. We, we felt it was uh, it, it looked good. We made, it made sense. I'm not sure now. We approved it or endorsed it or what, but it, it looked good. And then um, some of you were at the annual meeting um, two weeks ago. And there was a change of some, some, to me anyway, I guess I'll say, from, from my point of view, some new information came up. And I, as a um. Well, I, I guess I must say I spoke as the planning board chair at that time because I introduced myself that way. And I said that because there was new information that came up, and it, this had to do with that the property owners weren't necessarily willing sellers. And one of the warrant articles said that either the town purchases the land or takes by eminent domain. And I don't remember us having talked about that as a planning board. So I made a decision at the time to say that I'm not sure if the planning board would have endorsed that project if we had discussed the eminent domain part of it. Um, as it turns out, at the town meeting, the town meeting, um, well, they changed the warrant article and then, and then they did not approve it anyway. But, you know, a lot of time and energy and um, and it was a good project that the town, you know, doesn't. We don't just want to forget about. So I don't know exactly what the planning board's role on it is, but I did want to bring this back to the planning board to let you know what I did at town meeting. And you can tell me if I was right or wrong. But I also asked uh, Chief Pachur to come back and, and tell us like, what is, what's going on? Is there any update? So John, I wonder if you can just give us any update uh, first. Thanks for coming.
Sure. No updates at this point. Uh, the uh, the parcel is moving forward. The other 8.5 that we are purchasing from Joyce Purvier. I believe that's scheduled to be signed off on by the town July 1st. And we will look at signing an engineering firm on board. Um. Annual town meeting was quite eventful. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to speak and really describe the extent of the project and the reason that the board had written the article, the way in which it was. To purchase, to take, or otherwise acquire the property, because we didn't know if one sister was going to say yes, one sister was going to say no. We did know that Charles Mark had agreed that he would sell us up to 2 acres. He wanted a band shell in his name. And he had owned it for 33 and a half years. He bought it. He paid for it. And uh. You know, unfortunately, we just, we have to move forward and see how things work out. And the select board being at town meetings every 6 to 12 months, we're looking for authorization. To go to the sisters and say, hey, we don't want to rush you. But would you please keep us in the back of your mind? Because it truly facilitates a great uh, environment for the town and our children as a whole. So like I said, unfortunately, I couldn't convey that on town meeting floor. I was pretty much shut off.
All right. So I guess the um. So will. Will like negotiations sort of keep taking place? I know the vote was that we, the town couldn't. Purchase it necessarily, but it doesn't say you couldn't keep conversations going, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure where the conversations are going at this point. I know I, I haven't broached the topic with the town administrator to see if we would reach out. My preference would be to back away for at least 30 to 60 days minimal, while uh, the daughters had time to grieve the loss of their father. You know, Charles was an amazing uh, person. And I, I truly believe when I met with him and I had two witnesses there with me. That he really wanted his legacy to live on in the town of Deerfield. And he truly enjoyed culture. Uh, I think he'd be honored to have a band shell named after him. I know a couple of the neighbors were certainly not happy that there possibly was a band shell behind them. Um. But I think truly the town as a whole would enjoy it. And so much so that if we can squeeze a band shell on the existing Joyce Purvier property. That I still would ask the select board and other groups to entertain naming it after Charles Mark, because I think it's the right thing to do.
John, can I ask you a couple of questions since we're all talking about it? Um, I was looking at the plans and I'm psyched about conserving open spaces. And I have a lot of faith that you guys are going to work this out in a way that's amenable to everybody. Um, uh, but I'm wondering if the plans that we saw are iterative, if there's going to be um. Something more in terms of ADA um, um, accessibility?
Those were absolutely preliminary plans, just so people could have a visual idea. We, we were actually looking at sound barrier fences. We were looking at the possibility of putting the band shell further back. And then we started to have the discussion back and forth about. The vast majority that may use the band shell could be handicapped. They may be our older age group. Where if you look at a soccer field, you're generally going to be dealing with younger families. At least they can walk to the backside of the parcel. So we were going back and forth with many different ideas. But we wanted something that town meeting could actually visualize. So we were literally at the 10 to 20% stage. And we were going to go forth from there.
Okay. Thank you.
No, that's great.
I think one of the things that occurred to me um, at the, I heard this proposition on three different committees. So I feel very comfortable with the, the. Has it as, as it was laid out by um, Chief Pachur. But one of the things that keeps coming up for me is the um, the upcoming um, town celebration. That we are, you know, and I think uh, the chief and I both, we, we were through the, you know, the last celebration. And a lot of it happened in the park. Where there's now a school. A lot of the town events that brought people together um, happened in a park. And we don't have that now. We don't have a place. And, and so that kind of, that was poignant to me as we sat on the football field. Um.
Yeah, it was a very interesting night, Rachel. And I think you probably may concur with me where there was questions about the North Main Street parcel on the east side. Where we really don't have access up, up a braver. People think we have more park space than we do. People think we have more athletic fields. We don't own Sugarloaf Mountain. There's not parking behind the police station. There's a singular field there called Memorial Field. So all these things start to come out, but unfortunately, and I don't know why, I wasn't able to answer any questions at town meeting.
Right.
And literally at the five-minute mark on a $1.1 million project, I was shut off. And I really wasn't allowed to speak again in a 30-minute question and answer period.
Right. Well, the Brabberin property, that was too bad because we, I mean, the library looked at the Brabberin property. Everybody keeps looking at the Brabberin property. Because it looks so, you know, juicy sitting over there. And it's just not, it's not without huge drawbacks, huge drawbacks. The library is not going there, you know, that there's, there's it, the. We looked at it once before for something else as well. I mean, so anyway.
We'd like to really look at it for senior housing in the future. And I've met with four people that own houses up there to attempt to gain an easement. Or anything else to get us a right of way into there, so we can look at developing that into senior housing directly in the center of town, across from the senior center, across from the library. With the new library expansion coming into place, it makes perfect sense. So for people to throw out putting soccer fields there, it's not really the same. We want the, we want the town park and those soccer fields up directly next to Frontier and Deerfield Elementary School. We really want senior housing directly across the street from the senior center, town hall, the library, and where they can walk downtown to those businesses.
It's, Brabberin property is not functional for a uh, a, a space with any kind of traffic issues, any traffic issues. It's not, it's not sensible.
So I think our, I guess our message, John, is just that um, you know, keep, keep us posted. If there's, it's not something that I think needs a. Planning board approval necessarily, but it is a. It's a big part of uh, you know, development in, in Deerfield. So certainly anything we can do and to keep up on it um, would be great. But appreciate your, appreciate your work on it.
Yeah, no, and I highly appreciate it, John. It's um, it's going to be interesting to see how it works out in the mix because if we can get those fields and a nice, beautiful town park in there. And really utilize it on behalf of the, of the town, we're going to have kids walking on North Main Street from Frontier over there. Or the opposite side of that is they're going to cut through that back parcel that we attempted to acquire. And it's only time we get constant complaints that kids are cutting through there because they left stuff in the locker room. And literally, it's, it's just going to come back and it's going to broadside us. It's going to bring the issue straight to the forefront, which we really were trying to avoid.
Yep. All right. Anything else on that subject, planning board? Let me just say, John, before you leave, um, just to let the planning board know, I, I was corresponding with John last week about this, but then I also um. Because of the Black Lives Matter um, demonstrations and rallies going on, I asked him about, about that. And that um. You know, I just, I think all of us always now, we want to know more about our police training and things like that. And he got right back to me and said, this is an important issue. For, for him and the police department. So I appreciate that, John. And uh, you know, it's something we all need to keep in front of us. So, thanks.
Yeah, no, I highly appreciate it. Massachusetts is really at the forefront. A lot of training and policies come out of here. A lot of the retired police chiefs go to work for the International Association of Chiefs of Police and set the tone for the entire country. Unfortunately, a lot of scenes have blacked out. As I described to the chair, you know, John Wait, I am a supporter of Black Lives Matter. I'm a supporter that everybody in the community gets an equal voice and we should treat everybody well. And if one of my people is not, they will not be working for us. So, and a good police chief and good supervisors are constantly monitoring their people. And when red flags or even caution yellow flags go up. You need to act on. And some of these departments are not, and it's coming back to haunt them dramatically. And that's unacceptable. So feel free to.
I would also commend your work with the schools. I think that that's a key uh, feature of creating strong bonds with the community. And I, I, I often think that that's overlooked um, as less important when I think it's actually terribly important. So. I commend your, your office's work with the schools as well.
Yeah, but it breaks my heart, Rachel, because now across the country, you see this movement to pull cops out of the schools. And we don't throw, we don't put cops in schools for criminality.
No.
It's our kids. They're supposed to make mistakes. They're supposed to be knuckleheads. We're supposed to guide them. We're supposed to get them till they're 25, till they hit maturity. I'm not sure I hit maturity at 45 yet. So, you know, I think Brian Ravish does an amazing job. And he's truly a facilitator. He holds these kids' hands. They text them all weekend. That's what it's supposed to be. If you're in there enforcing criminal law, you're in there for the wrong reason. And that department's got problems.
Yep. All right. Well, I really appreciate the dialogue. Just, just having the dialogue is good, I think. And then I hope we keep it going, you know, through all this. So appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. I think we're good. All right. New business. Um. We view stormwater permit application from Newell Brands, Shanky Candle for improvement of their parking lot. So we were sent a um. Document. Which. I have here a stormwater permit application from Newell Brands, Shanky Candle, 9 North. Um. So they have a total area of an pervious surface right now. It exists in 11,320. They propose another 10,350. It's a commercial development. a commercial development where land disturbance will be more than twelve thousand five hundred square feet. So I think it checks all the boxes that it needs a stormwater permit. Jennifer, could you just remind me, did this go to the Concom and where does it stand on that?
Yes, it, it had to go to the Concom as well. So we tried to have a joint meeting, but that didn't work out. So basically, it was just about improving and expanding that parking lot and the culvert and, you know, talking about, oh, I'm sorry, I can't think of what they're, what that's called, that it impacted. I wasn't prepared to talk, I'm sorry.
There wasn't.
In the wetland area.
Tony, help!
There is wet, all right. So I didn't, I, I didn't realize Tony was here for this, for this project. So I guess we could have you, we could, we could have you give us a little background and update on it, Tony. That'd be great. Thanks for coming.
Well, thanks for having me. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I, yes, and I'm glad you're moving very fast as a board now. I was on, but I sometimes to talk, too many cooks in the kitchen, so I didn't want to say too much. But the, this project is a very small project. Yankee Candle, Newell Brands, if you remember, they did some building improvements. This is where their research facility is on Five North Street. And this building was built some time ago. There was a major expansion done in nineteen eighty-seven. And, and so what they're trying to do, if you are on the northwest side of the building, the southwest side, that area is all paved. But the northwest side and the access road on the north side of the building is all very hard-packed gravel, processed stone. So, I mean, it pretty much acts like pavement anyways. There's, there's nothing getting into that to soak up. So it's in between the building and five and 10. And if you were to go back there, you'll see the gravel area that I'm talking about. And you're correct, the reason why we're here is we're over the twelve thousand five hundred limit of disturbance. So that triggers the requirement with your local stormwater regulation to submit an application for a permit. We met with the Conservation Commission on May twenty-eighth, had a site visit with them on the twenty-seventh. We received unanimous approval on our notice of intent and I'm waiting for the order conditions. There's a, there's an appeal period which they hold on to it and make sure there's no appeals before they submit that to us and then we'll take that and get it recorded. So, so they had a review and they liked everything that we're doing. So essentially, if you were to go out there, you'll see piles. So this gravel and maintenance becomes a problem. Over time, you're just scraping it away and creating piles. And this is within that very north part of the building in this gravel area and that access is within the riverfront to Bloody Brook. So that's the reason why we had to go to the Conservation Commission. So the options are to just maintain this gravel area and continue to deal with, with that issue. Or the other thing is to pave it over that area. Yankee Candle has elected to go with option three as our preferred alternative, is to pave only a portion of that gravel parking area is required for operations. They're going to add, you know, they'll have parking spaces along the westerly side of that and then access around the building inside that parking to the building. So everything drains to the west away from the building and what we're going to install, there was historically, I sent, as part of the package, there is the eighty-seven expansion.
Can I just ask a quick, so you say it drains to the west toward the road, toward five and 10?
It does, but it can't get to the swale on five and 10. There was, there's woods there along there. And back in nineteen eighty-seven, there was a swale that was constructed along there with a straight discharge north to the Bloody Brook. Over time, the plowing and the, you know, just pushing that stuff, that has been somewhat compromised. But you can see the path where it was through the trees because there's an opening there. So, I mean, this with heavy storms, I mean, we can get some of that gravel to wash to the, to the, to the Bloody Brook. So the proposal is to pave only the portion that we need, remove some of that gravel parking, reestablish the swale, but establish it in a method that creates almost like a little water quality trench. And then install two dry wells with a connector perforated pipe in between. So what we're trying to do is to promote some infiltration, meet some of the standards that are required in your bylaw, but also in the state bylaw, or the state law, Stormwater Management and the Wetlands Protection Act. So with these dry wells and the connector pipe, I can store the amount that's required for, if we were to take this as just straight sod and then put in the gravel. So, so we're improving the situation. And then we can, what we'll do is we'll hold like six inches of water in there, more storm that fills up the dry wells, the pipe. If it overtaxes the infiltration, you'll get six inches of water in there, more at the dry wells. And it'll top it over and discharge like it did historically to Bloody Brook. And so that's essentially the, the plan. It's pretty minor. Like I said, this is not, you know, we show erosion control barriers to protect on the north side. Everything drains to the north in this area. On the south part here, south of this area, it's almost like a high point where they dropped the pavement. That drains to the south and goes, goes the other way. But it ultimately gets to the, to the Bloody Brook. So, and that's, that's essentially the, the proposal here. We will reduce the area gravel by, oh, I don't have that number. I think it was like six hundred and eighty-five feet, square feet. We also reduced the altered area within the riverfront by three hundred and eighty-five square feet. So it's an improvement as opposed to just paving it and let it go. And we hope that you'll agree with this approach, meeting your recommendations and your regulations and also the state. And this allows us to clean it and maintain it and, you know, improve that corner so we don't have the, the existing gravel and, and, you know, runoff from that gravel area. And that's, that's essentially it. I'll take any questions that you have.
Emily, so let me just introduce to the, to the two new members here. I, I know, I'm sure you're very aware now that we did the stormwater bylaw regulation several years ago and that the planning board is the approval agent, you know, approval authority for that. So a lot of the projects that we see, some of them are site plan review with a stormwater. Some, this is, this I guess doesn't need a site plan review. Was that, was that determined, Tony?
Uh, yeah, it's a redevelopment project of an existing parking area. I don't.
Just the stormwater.
Yeah, it's stormwater. Yeah. It's an existing parking area and we're just approving it. If it was new.
I do see on the.
If it was new, say that with the spot area, we would have to come in for site plan review. But it's an existing parking area redevelopment project.
So I think, when I read the application earlier, I think I, I misread it, that the existing impervious is eleven thousand six twenty and your proposed is ten thousand three fifty. So you're, so you're saying you're, you're actually going to have less impervious surface?
Yeah, we're not going to need all of that gravel parking area. We're going to actually re, you know, over time, that gravel expanded and when the swale got pretty much filled and knocked out. So I don't know if you have access to the plan, but we're only going to, we're only going to pave fifty feet, fifty-five foot, or fifty foot width down through there. So the gravel extends beyond that six to eight feet in area. So we're going to pull that out and make that part of a, a grass line water quality swale. That's going to hold water in that area and drain to the, to, to dry wells. And the reason why I have two dry wells, it's fairly flat. So I can't go from one end where we start the pavement all the way. I'd be down towards the Bloody Brook to be able to discharge it. And so it makes sense to just puddle it. We're just going to pool it right there and get it in to the dry wells and infiltrate. Anything that does not infiltrate will drain over the top and, and drain naturally to that, to the Bloody Brook, which is the, the historic drainage design in that area, except back in the day, everything was just graded to drain and, or graded to catch basins or pipes and discharge directly to screens and that. We don't do that now.
All right. Emily, you have a question?
Yes, even though you talk about reducing the impervious surface, which is great, is this an opportunity for having some of your paving materials be some of the pervious materials that I think are out there now?
That's a great question and that came up with the Conservation Commission. Because this is an industrial area, I, I tend not to design that for, for those uses because they end up getting stuff. We'll, we'll have trucks that are going to drive through that area. So in areas where it's straight parking, you know, automobile parking and that, then I've done that in certain areas. I've really only had the opportunity to do that once in this area. As I told the commission, the, the place that I first designed it and it worked really well was at Kringle Candle. So if you go north on five and 10, you've got the farm table on the left, the original, which used to be the old GBI building, that parking area, we expanded that parking area there and we put in porous pavement. And to my knowledge, it's still working very well. But the owner did, and we designed it over on the west side, but he didn't like it. So we didn't put it in. And we did underground infiltration because in the summertime, it scuffs a lot and it doesn't look, it didn't look to his liking. But, but it's amazing stuff. It, it will, you know, it takes the water and you just have to be careful maintaining it. You can't, you can't sand those parking lots and that because it'll, it ends up filling the voids and it shuts it right down. So in a case like this, I, I can do the infiltration, do the same thing that you would do with porous pavement here, with the dry wells and the swale. And it actually produces a little bit of green area, which is not there between the gravel. So the gravel goes right up to the trees right now. So we're going to pull some of that gravel back, create the swale, put the catch, you know, the dry wells and the connector pipe. So you're going to get the same benefit that you would for, for porous pavement. But I think because it's a commercial use, I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate doing that.
Any other planning board questions? So what we tend to do, because most of us on the planning board are not hydrologists or other fancy titled things, is have a peer review. Come in and look at it and, and talk to the engineer, developer's engineer. So, you know, that's, that's kind of been our, our way to do it. You know, Tony, this is a smaller project. But I do also, the Bloody Brook is an issue in town, you know, it has been for a long time. And so I, I certainly don't want any changes to that without really knowing what's going on.
Well, I, I mean, this is a very small project. I, you know, I can understand like the condo project and that, having peer review, very complicated storm drain system and so forth. This is very small. It's been reviewed by DEP and it's been, you know, reviewed by the Conservation Commission. And they're, that's their main thing. If we weren't next to the Bloody Brook, they wouldn't have even looked at it. So their major concern is the resource areas. I, I mean, obviously you have that right to do that, but it's so small, it just is going to slow, slow the project down. And what are the, what are the issues if something happens there? Can't be any, any, it's got to be better than what we're, what's there right now for water quality and peak runoff. So.
Have you talked to, has Kevin Scullborough, DPW been involved?
No, because it's a private project. Public is not involved. Public won't maintain it. There's an operation maintenance plan in the stormwater report as we're required to do by your regulations and the, the DEP.
But the swale goes out to five and 10, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't. Everything's on our own property. In this area, you've got a swale that's in the five and 10 property, which is very deep. Our, our, we're actually lower than five and 10 there. So if I was there, I could really point it out to you on the plan if we had a, instead of a new meeting. Yeah, it's all on, it's all on Yankee Candle property. It doesn't, it doesn't go on five and 10. Otherwise, we would have to get a state permit and we don't need to do that. Everything's on our own prop, or on the Yankee Candle property. Yes. And it's no public improvement. DEP looked at it, yes, because they get a copy of every notice and intent we submit.
But they didn't make any, they didn't pay anything about it.
Oh, they did. They had, they did some, they had some comments and I had to address those for the Conservation Commission. Yeah. Now, they were minor, it was a minor, minor comments. I, I probably could read them to you if you wanted to, but I probably have that here.
Well, what do other planning board members think here?
I would, I, I feel like we should have, you know, obviously this would have been a nice co-meeting, save Tony a night out, in, and with Concom. And, you know, it's funny because we just had that other property on North Street. So I was snooping around over there for that project across the street. And I know exactly that, but I haven't seen the area. And the Bloody Brook is such a, that is such a big concern for the center of town is water. I'd love to, I'd love to hear from Concom.
Well, I, soon as I get the order of conditions, I can provide it to you. I don't have a sway. I'm just trying to give you an idea where our parking, our parking doesn't expand and we don't extend beyond the limits of the gravel as it is right now.
No, no, we, we hear, we, we do hear you, Tony, and we understand where you're coming from. So Max, do you have any, anything on this one?
No, the soil there is, the soil there ought to take it. But if you feel like you need a peer review, by all means.
In the stormwater report, we actually went out and dug, dug a hole out there to confirm the soils. And DEP was extremely happy with our approach. And that, that soils report and that is in the record that was submitted to you. CoCOP, we used CoCOP's backhoe, went out and dug it and logged the soils. Yes, there shouldn't be a problem with the water table. And, and we're much higher than Bloody Brook. If we were really close to the elevation of Bloody Brook, then we might have water table problems. We're not. This is dry and it's, it's good material. It should infiltrate this parking lot. Like you said, it's fairly small. It's a huge improvement.
So under our, under our stormwater bylaws, I think we're required to do a public hearing. So I would.
That's what this is, actually. I mean, we, we, this was advertised and the butters were notified.
Is that, um?
Yes.
That's correct.
This is a public hearing.
Yes, it was.
It is a public hearing?
Yes, it is.
My bad. That's, that's my bad. I did not introduce this as a.
And, and to be honest with you.
We didn't open it. We didn't open the public hearing.
To be hon, to be honest with you, we actually notified for our Conservation Commission three hundred foot range for our butters. You have a discrepancy or a difference, you take your stormwater bylaw and you make it as if it was a zoning or a site plan action and not a Concom action, you know. So we, I, we, for the Conservation Commission, we notified three hundred foot of butters, just to be consistent with the stormwater regulation. But this is a public hearing.
We should open it as a public hearing, if it is a public hearing, because that, that actually is a different process than just a discussion.
Yes. It was advertised like that. It did, did go out as a public hearing.
So, you got to open the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking for it. I got it. Oh, that's a different one. I'm looking for the notice of the public hearing. I really got to read that.
I can look at my email, too.
Yeah, I don't look at it. It should be on the website. I don't, it's on the website.
Hold on, let me look. Hold on, let me look.
It's not on our agenda.
No, it's not on the website. Notice of public hearing, but that's from June last year. Oh, that's, actually, that's the floodplain, the public hearing that we can use for next, next month.
All right. I'm wondering if Sue just did the NOI as a public, because when I'm looking in the emails, I'm seeing the ConCom as a public hearing, or the notification.
Can anybody hear me there?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Paul. I've been, I've been trying to call, and I've been trying to get through and get through and get through, and I had to hang up and start over again to get into the, into the program.
Okay, you're here.
Okay, and I just, I went down to my property, which is on the north end of the property, and I saw where the hall had been dug up, all the, around the drain from Route 5 and 10, and going out into the back there. And, and I didn't, I did not get a chance. I'm sorry?
Are you talking, it's in a butter now?
That's, yes, I initiated, I told everybody that in the beginning of this meeting.
Oh, okay. I didn't check that. But, okay.
So, so we had a, you know, it's being dumped out into the back of my property. I have not really gone out there. I don't go out there. It's got poison ivy right around that area when we plow. So, but I don't mind. I mean, it's all, it's all been there for quite some time, so that's all into the, into the 5 and 10 property, major portion of it.
And you did get a, a notice of a public hearing?
I did get a number of the, I did get a notification of that point, but we've had, we've had some issues here with family issues, but that's okay. We didn't get a chance to go into that. But I figured it would come up. I don't think it really affects it that much. But it was funny when I had to go out there and see the identification of where the water's coming off of 5 and 10 into the, into that area. And I don't know where it comes from, from that parking lot, back down, probably about a quarter of, quarter of an acre down to the south of where I am.
Yeah, this area doesn't drain to the 5 and 10 property, though. It goes directly north to the Bloody Brook. And you are on a butter on the other side of the Bloody Brook, right, Paul?
I'm on the north end of it there, and it was, I don't know where it goes through the corner of my property, but I did see the 10-inch concrete pipe, 10, 12-inch concrete pipe coming off the highway to drain out into the back there.
Yeah, that's, that's 5 and 10 state runoff. We're not, that's not a...
That's state land out there, correct?
Yes, yes. Do you have a copy of the legal ad?
I'm sorry?
I was, I was asking, what is it, Jen? Is it Jen?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a copy of the legal ad? Because I know we paid for, we paid for, for the advertisement, and I know we supplied money for the notifications to the abutters.
I know that is what I asked.
I did get it.
You did? Okay.
I did get it, yes.
Paul, do you have?
I'm having troubles. I'm hearing, I'm trying to watch it on my telephone and trying to listen to it on my, on my home phone here. And things were just echoing all the time, the whole time we've been talking. But I understand what's going on, and I, I guess it's, it should, it should be okay from my standpoint, I would guess.
But John, like, what, what do you want to do about opening the meeting and having it being a hearing instead of a meeting?
He needs to read the notice. He doesn't have a copy of the notice. He can't read it.
So that's why, Paul, I wondered, do you have a copy of the notice?
Legal ad.
Are you asking, John, are you asking me if I had a notice?
Yeah, do you have it with you?
Yes, I did get, I did get a notice in there. It was on the 28th, and I was unable to be on the phone with that. I'm very familiar with the Zoom, but this, whatever, whatever this conference one is, is very difficult for me to use from here.
Yeah, Paul, you...
If you have a copy of the notice, could you read it to us?
Oh, hang on just a minute, let me...
I think he's alluding to the Conservation Commission, John, because that was May 28th when we met. See, us as the applicant, or the applicant's representative, for conservation wetland permitting, it's incumbent upon us to notify the abutters and place the legal ad, which we did, and I think that's what Paul is alluding to. On zoning and zoning planning board, and because this stormwater permit is a planning board issue, the town, we pay for the legal ad, pay for the abutters, and the town does the notification and places the ad at the expense of the applicant. So...
Right. So what I'm saying is if Paul has the notice, he could read it, and we could then open, make it an official open public hearing.
I don't have it, but let me look and see. I've got, that should be around here.
Otherwise, I'm thinking we could, we could do it in three weeks, and in that three weeks, we could get a peer review just to look at this quickly for us.
Okay, I feel, I feel bad, I feel bad about that, but I, I've always been kind of, it's always been kind of tough over there with that water flooding out into that back because most of my property in the back is total, is all wet, I believe. Is that true, Steve? Tony, is that true? I'm not sure.
Well, I don't know if I've been on your, your, your property. I mean, I, I don't, you know, I think I went to your store once.
Yes, Tony Calvert opened up that, opened up the end of that pipe right there on the edge of my ground, because we, we, as a owner of that property, have made an effort to, to keep track of that land and keep it plowed, keep it, you know, taken care of. And it was kind of funny when I came, came down there about a week or so ago, and there was the, there was two pieces, there was a 2x4 standing up where there was that pipe that comes out of the, off the highway into there. And it's not my property that it's going onto. It's the, it's the highway, the state highway.
Yeah, there's, there's a, I think there's a 10x10 box culvert that the Bloody Brook drains under 5 and 10. But, you know, that's, that's all state-related maintenance and so forth. Yeah, this, this little project is all within the Yankee property, and, you know, discharges, I don't have a scale on me, but it's got to be 70 feet away from the Bloody Brook or so. So it's, it's a, it's a, I mean, the reason why essentially we're captured here is because of the riverfront, you know. Well, that's, that's too bad that, you know, we thought this was, this should have been a public hearing this evening.
It's been very difficult for me. I've been sitting here trying to keep track of this, and I'm hearing a delay from, from two different places here, and I just, it's so hard to follow it through. So maybe I can get into, into some other better, another computer or something that'll get through. I'll try to, to do something. I'm sorry that it's not, it's not easy when I, when I, when the phone part of it starts canceled out.
Do we have any other, do we have any other buddy on the line? I don't see anybody, no other public, no other...
Bill Swayze is probably on, my client.
Yeah, Bill Swayze from Yankee Candle is on.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah. I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I've just, it's, it's been a very, very frustrating time here trying to, trying to hear and have all delays going one year and one year after the other, and...
Forget it, Paul.
So this might have to be notified again to the abutters and all of that.
I'm, I've just been looking, and the only thing I can find is the NOI for the ConCom that Sue had sent to me in an email, so.
Well, I've got, I've got this meeting here that says the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a meeting on the 15th at 7:00 PM, meetings normally held at the municipal office or being remotely, with adequate alternative means of public access and where required public participation.
That's just, that's not, your abutters...
That's the agenda, yeah.
This is a, this is a separate, this is not part of the, the agenda, but it's, it's its own, it's its own public hearing on 15th of June.
Oh, so you do have that. That's what we're looking for.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at right here in my hand. I found it. I've got it here. You want me to read it? The Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 15th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, meeting normally held at the municipal office or being held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access, and where required, public participation provided in accordance with the governor's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Unfortunately, with, with all this, this stuff that's been going on, my wife has had a, had a right hip surgery and replaced on the 11th of March, and then we've been, we've been...
Keep reading the thing.
Okay, the plan, the planning board will review the application of Newell Brands Inc., Yankee Candle of 5 North Street, SS Map 168/109 for a storm, stormwater permit. Web browser using meeting URL, HTTPS colon, colon, www.anymeeting.com/171-010327. Dial in number, which I'm on the phone here now, 262063314836, and the PIN number 171-010329. A copy of the stormwater application is available at our website at www deerfieldmass.us. Deerfield Planning Board, signature at the bottom of this notification. So we're talking about stormwater permit.
Hallelujah, it's right.
Open that public hearing. So that's official. Thanks, Paul. All right, so now it's an official stormwater bylaw public hearing. Now the question is, what do we want to do, planning board?
Well, I have, I, I'll be honest. So I haven't had a chance to really look at these plans. And, and I, I, you know, I'm sure Tony's right. It just, and, and, I mean, again, because I was out cruising the property across the street for review not so very long ago, I actually have a little more familiarity with the property than, at that, at that side of the property than I would have normally. But I don't have a lot of familiarity. I'm taking it all in, but I just feel a little uncomfortable moving forward without more information.
Well, I did get the notification, and, this is Paul again. I did not, I did not see any notification for this stormwater permitting, I mean, stormwater, yeah, stormwater permit. And so I didn't, I didn't necessarily see anything other than what was going to be pronounced tonight, and we've been talking about it. I don't know, does it take another, does it take another notification, or, or did that one for the, that was back on the 28th?
I think we can continue it. I just don't want to continue it a long time because I feel that Tony's, Tony's discussion tonight makes me think very clearly that this is not a dramatic project. But I, having no notice from ConCom, and having no super good familiarity with the project other than what we've learned tonight, honestly, I would feel more comfortable continuing it, not necessarily forever. I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know what, what everybody's...
June 6th, I mean...
Were able to share this, and share a map of what he's talking about with us?
Yes.
Tony, are you able to share your screen so that we can see the project and see what you're talking about? Because I can't find a visual of it attached.
Let me, I think I have one. Do you have one?
Well, I have only the, I have only telephone conversation here. I do not have any video.
Can I make a suggestion? So I've been looking at the plan the whole time, and I kind of follow it, but I can't totally follow it because, as I said, we're not, you know, hydrologists and things. So I would recommend that we make a motion to continue the hearing until July 6th, three weeks, and in the meantime, get a peer review who doesn't have to spend much time on it, and it, we can give instructions to just do a quick, quick review of it and have it answered by the July 6th so that we can then vote on it at that point.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry to hold you up on that, but I'll see if I can't get some kind of computer, the Chrome on here so that I can see it from one point, one point only, not just on, on my cell phone and on my regular telephone.
Here's what, so there's a motion on the table to, there are two motions, as far as I can tell, potentially. One is to hire a peer review, and the other is to continue. So I'd say that we should continue, and I would move that we...
I'd say continue.
So that, that's my motion, is to continue this meeting until the open, the public hearing, until, not this meeting, the public hearing, until July 6th.
I would like, I mean, we would often to do a site visit. Typically, boards will do a site visit to review the thing in the field prior to a meeting so that they understand the project and the scope. Possibly with that, you'll see how tiny it is, and you may not need to spend the money on a peer reviewer for something as small as this.
Tony, Tony, I'm willing to go out and take a look at it. I just, I just need to make sure that everybody understands that, that I am a, a, an abutter to what they're doing. So I just don't want to have a problem over it. You know what I mean? I, I'm not...
No, I think you'll be very, very impressed and be happy with the improvements, because they do...
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. And Rachel and others, I can send you the plans and everything, the packet like ConCom looked at. You have that, and then if you did want to schedule a site visit...
No, I think we should schedule it tonight. I think we should continue. So I have a motion on the table, a move that we continue this until July 6th. That, that, I think I'd like to do that first.
Somebody second it.
I second, let's go around and vote.
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Now, can I, can I vote on this, or do I abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Yeah, safer to abstain. Ann Mary?
Ann Mary Coolier, aye.
Max?
Max, he's aye.
Paul?
Abstain.
Annalee?
Annalee Wolf Cool, aye.
And Denise?
Denise Mason, aye.
John Wade, aye. All right, so 601 to hold the, to continue this meeting until July 6th at 7:30. I don't, I don't know if we set a time, but we already have the other thing at 7, so, say 7:30. And then, so then it's, we don't really need to make a motion if we're not going to hire a peer review, but what we want to do is have a few planning board members visit the site, and we all want to look at the plans.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay, and when, when will we, how will we find out, John?
Well, Tony, what do you have? What do you have available? My, my time is little, little, I have some openings.
Well, good. I mean, we can do it, we could do it tomorrow. We could do it Wednesday. Can't do it Thursday or Friday, and then that's...
Wednesday's fine for me. I've got something tomorrow morning till noon, so other than that, Wednesday would probably be better.
I can meet any time of the day.
Wednesday, end of day?
5 o'clock.
Sounds good.
Wednesday, 5 o'clock, the 17th.
I, I can't, I can't do it on the 5th because I have... I, I can't, I can't do it on the fifth, because I have, I have a, another meeting. Um, I, I could do it on Thursday night without a, I don't, that's, that's the one night, Wednesday night, I've got the-
Wednesday, the, the, um-
Seventeenth, right? Yeah, cause, cause I think it's important. I know you can't act on it, but if you get a sense walking away from that, that you really think you want to peer review it, then maybe we could get that in the works with Ty and Bond or somebody like that, um, and have their information for the next meeting.
Do you want to do it after, after, on Tuesday, tomorrow? You want to do it after five?
No, we're gonna do it, when, you can't do Wednesday at five o'clock?
No, I have, I have a meeting at my credit union. I'm, we got a board meeting that night.
Uh, on the seventeenth?
Uh, on the fif- the seventeenth is our, is our board meeting.
Okay.
For the Franklin First Credit Fresh June Union. I can go, I can go Thursday night, I mean, any other day of the week this week is not, is, is fine.
How about tomorrow? Tony, are you free tomorrow at five?
I am tomorrow at five o'clock, if you want to do it.
Annalee's good. Denise?
Let me, let me, I'm checking my calendar. I think I'm good.
I'm good at five, I'm good tomorrow, Tuesday, Tuesday.
Done. So do, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the legal is of, of all of you meeting there on site. Is there any sort of?
No.
No, you could just-
Yeah, there is something.
Can't advocate for the project, but I can show you the area and talk about the improvements. So you can't, you, you, you can't, it's not an open meeting, so you really can't discuss between yourselves and that, my understanding. You can meet and get an understanding. We do it all the time with, before meetings, so that the boards are up to date, and it, and they understand.
Just no discussion?
No discussion. Now, I don't know, are there any public on the phone? Is there anybody that's, you know, besides Paul that is in opposition or have questions about it from the public? I can't see all of the public on my thing.
I, I don't, I don't have a real problem with it, and I, I think that if we can just go and take a look at it, and, and then we can decide from there. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't need we get to go out and, and, uh, and, you know, having, uh, somebody go out and peer review it. I'm just trying to, just trying to see what's going, whatever.
Tomorrow at five o'clock, and I'll, and I'll meet you in the back, right at the back of the building. So you come in, North Street, go, go in, and drive around the back of the building, and I'll just, we'll meet you there.
Okay, five o'clock. Uh, that's good for me.
Five o'clock tomorrow. That's great. Thank you so much. I think it'll, it'll clear up any confusion. You'll actually get to see it in the field, and I'll do my best to describe how big of a hole we're gonna dig and how it's gonna come together.
So what I'll try to, try to do is send the plans to you tomorrow morning, so you'll have it, and you can print them out before you go for your site visit.
Okay, so when can I get that stuff? Because I do, I think I'm gonna, my string group has been playing the town, the town common, but, um, I'd be willing to get the paperwork anytime during the day before we get there to see what's what. Is that okay?
I, I'll send it in, I'll, I'll be at work at eight AM, so I can get it and send it to you all, and who, who is speaking? Sorry.
I'm, this is Paul.
That was Paul.
Paul, yes, so I can-
So check your, check your email at nine o'clock tomorrow.
I will do that. No problem.
And I will have documents with me, so, you know, we can go through the whole package with you too. Okay? Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it, yeah. See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow. Oh, boy. All right, good job.
I know, that's-
Rachel?
That's all we've got on the agenda. Annalee, you got a question?
Yeah, no, earlier Rachel said that there also was a motion about having the, um, peer review. Do we have to?
So we don't, I don't think we have to do that. If we're gonna do this site, I mean, and if we come up with something, we say, oh my gosh, this definitely needs, uh, peer review, then we could actually call another meeting and do that in, in advance, or we could wait till July sixth. He's, if Tony's taking a bit of a risk, he, he, you know, he doesn't think we need a peer review. He thinks that this is gonna be obvious to us tomorrow, and it may be, that, that may be, and then we've all feel very comfortable with it. If, but we all leave there, not having discussed it, but we leave there, um, without discussing it, and we, we decide that, um, a peer review is necessary, then when we all come back together on July sixth, we're gonna say, so he's taking a bit of a risk. This sets him back, and then, then we do a peer review on the sixth, that's another month away for him, um.
Unless, Rachel, what I'm wondering is if we could make a motion now to say that if necessary, we could hire a peer review prior to July sixth. Leave it a little open-ended.
So, okay, I, I, I-
Okay, all right. I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
So, so I would move that we actually, what we can do is we can, um, um, deputize or embolden or, you know, authorize John to, um, to engage, to, to set out an RFP for a peer review, and then he cannot do it. That's the better way to do it, right? So we say, I make a motion that we, um, ask John Wade to, ask Chair to, or ask Jen to, um, engage a peer review, um, um, but then we just don't do it. If we, if we decide, can we do that? Is that scummy?
I'm, I'm good with anything that, that happens. We're gonna meet at five o'clock, and we can come up with an answer then.
Well, the whole thing is that you can't discuss it, so you can, you can say, you can say you want to set up a peer review. John can set up a peer review, and we just don't do it. However, if John feels at the site visit tomorrow that he thinks that it needs a peer review, then we can go ahead after Rachel makes her motion. But nobody can discuss it. It will really be up to John.
So I'm gonna jump in here and say, I'm gonna make a motion at the discretion of the Vice Chair, Rachel, because I'm not gonna get there tomorrow. So, at the discretion of the Vice Chair, uh, we hire a peer reviewer or not.
Okay. Okay, so somebody has to second that?
I'll second that. Denise, second it.
All right, all those in favor, Rachel?
Aye.
Ann Mary.
Ann Mary Coolier, aye.
Uh, Max.
Max Auntie's aye.
Paul.
I abst- abstain.
But, um, Annalee.
Annalee Wolf call, aye.
Denise.
Denise Mason, aye.
John Wade, aye. So six zero one, so, um, at some point in the next week or so, at the discretion of the, of Rachel, uh, we hire a peer reviewer. But, good. So, as many of us as possible come tomorrow without, uh, discussing the, the issues.
All right.
Okay, just, just look at the situ- just look at it and, and then that's it, right?
Yeah, you can listen to Tony, but that's all. Max, you had something?
Okay, all right.
Max, what?
Okay, all right.
Are you available, Max?
I won't be able to make it, but if I have a set of plans, I can, uh-
Okay, good.
I'll send those out first thing in the morning.
And one way or the other, I'll get some, I'll get the plans as well tomorrow.
All right, so we're continuing the public hearing, um, Rachel, it'd be great to get Tony to sign that thing tomorrow, but I don't-
Oh, yeah.
The form that we use when we continue public hearing.
Jen is in the office. So I'll stop by Jen during the day. What time do you leave, Jen?
Four.
So I'll stop by before, get the paper and bring it to Tony.
That'll make it all nice and efficient.
If anything, I'll just keep it in the foyer in an, uh, an envelope.
Fair, good, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You can pick it up at five minutes to five, yeah.
Right, yeah.
I just have a question. Whoops. This is Denise. Just a question. I know we can't discuss, but we could ask questions.
Oh, yeah, yes.
From Tony, okay. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you can discuss with Tony as much as you want. You just can't deliberate amongst each shot, amongst-
Got it.
Yep.
All right, is there any other business? Almost a two-hour meeting. We're trying to keep them to one and a half hours, but, uh-
Max, if you want, is there questions that you want to ask? After you look at the plans?
He should give you a call.
It'll depend on the plans. They're usually pretty, pretty, it's pretty, sounds pretty cut and dried, but-
It does, right? Well, but if there's a, can, can we, I think you could just text me the question. If there was any question, and I would ask.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Just on the record.
Okay.
All right, we've already set a date for-
Oh, oh, I have, I have something. Uh, they're actually all online. If you go to the calendar on our website for the Concom meeting, they're all there.
Okay, good.
You can look at them tonight. I, I had, I had uploaded them to that Concom meeting.
Okay, good.
So I think that was, uh, May twenty eighth. That's what he, I mean, I'd have to go back and look, but I think that they were saying that that was posted for, yeah, but they're there, but I can send them out anyways tomorrow in an email, but all, the whole packet is, is there. Thank you.
You can send them anyway. That would be great, just cause-
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, sure. Yeah, cause, yeah, absolutely.
All right, we have, uh, we've set a date for the next meeting, and that is July, uh, Monday, July sixth at seven o'clock. We already have two agenda items. That's exciting. So Denise and Annalee, just so you know, that is the, our, our, our schedule is Mondays, the first Monday of every month at, um, seven o'clock, unless otherwise, and every once in a while, there's a holiday or something that messes us up, and then we try to figure out. Usually, we go to the second Monday of the month, but in this case, we had to go to the third because of the two other town-
Elections.
Things going on, so, yeah. Excellent. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourned.
Second it.
I think that's unan- that's unanimous. I, I'm making a, a declaration that that's a unanimous decision, so.